All this special meeting of Hamilton City School Board for December 5th, 2024 to order. Mr. Treasurer, will you please administer the oath?
Will all board members please stand and raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you'll support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Hamilton City School District, Butler County, Ohio, to the best of your ability, in accordance with the laws now in effect and here and after it be enacted during your continuance in said office until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do. Mr. Treasurer, will you please call roll for the vote?
Brecht.
Here.
Bowing.
Here.
Roy.
Here.
Blanton.
Here.
Oliva.
Here.
All members present.
Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I proudly be stood by of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Superintendent, do you have any comments you would like to make?
Thank you, yes. Beginning with Baden's many accomplishments, Baden Senior Kathleen Burke is a National Merit semifinalist, scoring in the top 1% of our nation's PSAT test takers. McGuire Smith was also a National Merit Commended Scholar, scoring in the top 2-5% of PSAT test takers. Baden had a very successful open house with student ambassadors giving tours to 250 total families. These students represented 47 different schools. Baden tennis player Caroline Boyle went to state for her third year in a row. Baden staff, faculty, and student council coordinated a very successful homecoming parade. Baden senior Naomi Samples was named October 14th Student of the Week by the Cincinnati Inquirer. For the second year in a row, Baden's rock band has performed at the Cincinnati Reds' opening day parade. This year, Baden founded LEAF, the Women's Empowerment Club, as well as the esports team. The Baden Girls soccer team tied for the GCL coed division title with Kettering Alter and advanced to regional finals. Baden's Matandi Sports Plex has constructed its field and bleachers are coming soon. It is down to its last $360,000 of the 15 million goal. Baden seniors Sam Fisher and Ben Vornegan earned the Community Impact Award from the Butler County Board of Developmental Disabilities. Baden's National Honor Society inducted 45 new students into this year's chapter. Now proceeding to Hamilton's achievements. Varsity football had an outstanding record this season of 8-2, advancing to the playoffs. JV football also had an impressive season, going 9-1. The NJROTC unit achieved the title of Distinguished Unit with Honors, the top 10% in the US. Last year, they went to Nationals for orienteering, and this year, they placed first in the First Area Drill Meet of the Year. They hope to go to Nationals again this year for orienteering and drill. Our Hamilton High School marching band received straight superior ratings at state. Hamilton's Drama Club, Big Blue Company, put on a very successful production of Almost Maine this fall. Hamilton's a cappella group, En Harmonics, was selected to perform at the Kettering Acafest, and they were most recently selected as an ICHSA competitor, with ICHSA standing for the International Championship of High School Acapella. The student council has almost 200 members this school year. Homecoming was incredibly successful, raising close to $100,000. The NHS has over 80 members this year. They've started Popcorn Fridays biweekly and hope to raise enough money to host an event in the community that is open to the public by the end of the school year. The Sources of Strength Peer Leader Group has 59 members. It aims to encourage student engagement through school events and advocates for ways to improve students' mental health and well-being. The Out of the Blue Student Magazine was founded this year. The next issue will feature an article surrounding Civic Day. This school year, the Debate Team was founded. The Healthy Hamilton Coalition was brought to high school this year with the help of Envision Partnerships. Its goal is to increase community engagement in Hamilton through community events.
Thank you, Ms. Superintendent. Now onto new business. Our first agenda item is changes to the phone policy at Baden.
Baden High School will change its phone policy to allow students to carry phones in case of emergency. Students at Baden High School are currently unable to carry phones. This is not only an ineffective stop to academic distraction, but it also makes students feel insecure. Harvard studies show that most students feel more secure while in possession of their phone. Phones bring the security from their ability of communication. The ability to let your loved ones know of a situation that you're in, or even one that they might be susceptible to, such as a tornado or other widespread issues, brings a sense of security to anyone.
Haven't numerous studies concluded that cell phones are a disruption to education?
While many studies have concluded that the possession of phones disrupts the education of students, a workaround to this would be to force students to have their phone shut off. Many studies mention how phone notifications are a massive source of this distraction, with every notification supplying the person with a release of dopamine, which then leads to the person wanting to check their phone, causing the person to check their phone even more often for more hits of dopamine. Phones being shut off entirely circumvents this, and with enough enforcement, students will have their phone shut off during classes.
And how would this be enforced?
Currently, phone enforcement is fairly heavy, with anyone caught possessing a phone being written up. However, a weak point for the enforcement of phone policies are within the restrooms. Restrooms are a weak point due to the lack of surveillance, and the only people inside of restrooms being other peers. I believe a workaround to this would be to force students to give their phones to teachers whenever they enter the restroom, fixing the problem. Outside of the restrooms, enforcement would be very similar to how it is currently, with the only difference being the possibility of teachers finding phones if notifications go off.
Thank you, Mr. Blanton. Do we have a motion?
I move that Baden High School will change its phone policy to allow students to carry phones in case of an emergency.
I second the motion. Mr. Treasurer, will you please call roll for the vote?
Roy.
Yes.
Blanton.
Yes.
Brecht.
Yes.
Bowing.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Issue passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Our next agenda item is encouraging more Hamilton High students to participate in breakfast and lunch. Hamilton High School main campus will hire another part-time cafeteria worker in order to implement changes in the breakfast and lunch program. Access to food during the school day is not only needed for students' brain development, cognitive function, and energy, but also student safety and security. Hamilton High School does not have enough cafeteria workers to adequately provide food for all students. Despite us qualifying for the free lunch program, only a fraction of our students are currently participating in breakfast and lunch. By providing another opening for a food service worker, we can influence more students to buy breakfast and lunch. Ms. Superintendent, do you have any data regarding how many students are currently participating in breakfast and lunch?
I do, yes. To start, only 400 of the nearly 2,000 students at the main campus eat breakfast provided by the school, and only 1,000 students eat school-provided lunch. Food service workers have reported that they do not feel like they are able to provide nutritious food to students, and cafeteria workers have reported that they do not have enough staff to adequately provide for all students.
How would hiring another food service worker lead to more students participating in lunch and breakfast? Breakfast and lunch are often stressful times for both students and staff. By hiring an additional cafeteria worker to help facilitate the meal programs, we can create a more efficient and welcoming experience for students. Adjusting the chaotic nature of the meal line through more staff will help encourage more students to participate in school breakfast and lunch. Additionally, by having more cafeteria staff, we can offer improved accommodations and enhance the lunch and breakfast program for all students at Hamilton High School.
What do you mean by the chaotic nature of the meal line?
During breakfast and lunch, there is an overall disorganization that can easily occur when there are too many students trying to get lunch and not enough staff available to serve them. As a result of the crowding and waiting times, it makes students less likely to get food all together due to frustration. For example, during lunch, those who choose to go through the daily taco line have to wait up to 10 to 15 minutes to get served. Adjusting the meal line by hiring another cafeteria worker would create a less stressful and more efficient process for both students and staff.
How could the accommodations be improved?
Accommodations such as communication with students, accessibility in the cafeteria, and facilities within the food service area could be improved. Having another cafeteria worker would allow more students to openly communicate and interact with staff. Another worker could also assist with improving the accessibility of food being served and help facilitate the lunch lines. Additionally, they could assist at the various food stations and help improve the facilities and wait times.
What would the cost be to hire one more cafeteria worker?
Mr. Treasurer, do you have an answer?
It would cost about $25,000 to hire a food service worker for one year.
Thank you, Ms. Bowing. Do we have a motion? Hamilton High School main campus will hire another part-time cafeteria worker to implement changes in the school breakfast and lunch program.
I second the motion. Mr. Treasurer, will you please call roll for the vote?
Blanton.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Bowing.
Yes.
Brecht.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Issue passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Our next agenda item is K-6 gifted programming for the Hamilton City Schools. Hamilton will incorporate a gifted education program in grades 3 through 6 in order to service identified gifted students and enrich their educational experience. This is an issue that our superintendent has worked on a great deal. Ms. Superintendent, would you please update us?
Thank you, Ms. President. Currently, no gifted programming is offered for elementary-age students in the entire school district. While 5% of students in grades 3 through 6 are identified as gifted, 0% of them are being serviced and major district report card points are being lost each year. We must also cater to the educational needs of this group of gifted children, as traditional elementary-level content is not doing so. By identifying two magnet schools for gifted students and establishing resource rooms for scheduled enrichment time, gifted students could be pulled out for about an hour of instruction per day starting in the 3rd grade.
What would these magnet schools be?
The chosen magnet schools are Bridgeport from the west side and Crawford Woods from the east side. These two schools have the lowest number of students enrolled for each side of the city, and therefore should have the most space to incorporate gifted services.
How would transportation be provided to these magnet schools?
Busing would be provided for these students to their respective magnet schools in the same manner that we directly transport ELL students to Highland Elementary. This may require the addition of 2 to 4 more bus drivers.
How would we guarantee that the scheduled gifted programming would qualify as a resource room?
There are a few requirements that must be met in order to allow this model to be implemented. To start, to qualify as a resource or pull-out room, the gifted programming must take up at least 15% of instructional time per school week. Additionally, the maximum class size is 20 students, with a setting consisting of only gifted identified students. Each gifted certified teacher has a maximum caseload of 80 gifted students, hence the need for about 2 teachers per magnet school, and the classroom must have a WEP, a Written Educational Plan. Waivers can be applied for if these demands cannot be met.
How much would this cost?
Mr. Treasurer, do you have an answer?
The costs would include hiring 2 gifted certified teachers per magnet school to comply with the 80-student caseload limit. The average salary for gifted teachers in Ohio is $53,818 a year. It would include any busing costs to allow students to be transported to their magnet schools.
Thank you, Ms. Superintendent. Do we have a motion?
I move that Hamilton will incorporate a gifted education program in grades 3 through 6 in order to service identified gifted students and enrich their educational experience.
I second the motion.
Mr. Treasurer, will you please call roll for the vote?
Brecht.
Yes.
Blanton.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Bowing.
Yes.
Issue passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Our next agenda item is incorporation of murals throughout Baden High School.
Baden will begin to have students paint murals throughout the school building to create community, inspire change, and enliven the school setting. Baden High School currently has no murals in its building. The addition of murals would allow for students to create something that would remain permanent even after the point of their graduation.
Is this something you believe Baden students would participate in?
Yes, I believe so, because there are roughly about 200 students at Baden that are currently taking art classes or are involved in the visual arts program.
Why are you proposing this for Baden?
Many students already have their art displayed in the hallways that they create in art classes, so why not include permanent murals that would showcase the expression of our art students for a longer period of time? This is something that I saw during our exchange day at Hamilton High School, which has proven to perform well. I wholeheartedly believe it would also give the art students something that would be able to leave a positive impact on their school.
Where could murals be placed in the school building currently?
Murals could be placed in the Fearman Family Activity Center, where there are many blank walls that can be covered with murals that are in relation to athletics or music, as the activity center is the home to Baden's lifting room and to the Baden Rocks Room. Murals could also be placed within staircase walls and above lockers.
How would these murals be planned and created?
Well, currently, Baden offers an after-school program called Baden Studio, which is dedicated to giving students both in and not in art classes a chance to participate in art projects. This club is run by Baden's 2 art teachers, who fully support this idea of creating murals to show their students' expression. Baden Studio could begin meeting more frequently to plan what they would like to create a mural of and where they would like to place it.
And where would you get the funding for the supplies required for these murals?
In enrolling in any art class at Baden, students are paying a fee for their class, and I believe we could utilize a portion of those fees to go into the cost of the supplies. Mr. Treasurer, about how much money is being paid for art fees just this year?
This year, a total of $23,000 come from art fees.
This total could cover for about 2 to 3 murals to be done in 1 year, if that's possible.
Thank you, Ms. Oliva. Do we have a motion?
I move that Baden will begin to have students paint murals throughout the school building to create community, inspire change, and enliven the school setting.
I second the motion. Mr. Treasurer, will you please call roll for the vote?
Bowing.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Brecht.
Yes.
Blanton.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Issue passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Our next agenda item is the addition of a library at Baden High School. Baden High School will incorporate a library that serves both educational and recreational purposes, allowing students access to free books for academic growth and personal enrichment. This is an issue that our treasurer has worked on a great deal. Mr. Treasurer, will you please update us?
Thank you, Ms. President. Baden High School currently requires students to independently acquire novels assigned for assignments, often incurring rental or purchase costs. Students with extra time during class are encouraged to read, but foul a library, there are limited options to remain productive in class. Establishing a library would allow Baden students to conduct research for assignments and constructively use their free time.
Where would Baden build a new library?
Exiting the door in the student commons, there is a path leading to the lower parking lot. The path is located in a space that is roughly 30 feet wide between the main school and the PFAC, and the library would be 100 feet long. The proposed space would be ideal for a small library, only taking 3,000 square feet.
Would the library block students from exiting the student commons?
No, the walkway would remain accessible. Lockable doors would be installed to the outside of the library, according to the current door schedule, preventing unauthorized access. A door similar to the gray PFAC doors would connect the commons and the library, keeping the library quiet during activities. These doors would let students exit through the school through the library.
How would a library improve Baden?
For students, the library would be a quiet area for study groups and focus. They could also use the library for after-school activities. Baden could create an online database to make searching for scholarly articles more time-efficient. Additionally, teachers could store books in the library and reference them for assignments. Teachers could take advantage of the library by giving incentives to read and consider rewards like extra credit.
What would the cost be for construction, hiring a librarian, and a digital library?
Construction is estimated at $2 million, with $100,000 for initial book funding. A librarian's annual salary would be $40,000, and maintaining a digital library would be an annual cost of $20,000 to allow students free access.
Do we have a motion? I move that Baden High School will incorporate a library that serves both educational and recreational purposes, allowing students to rent free books for academic growth and personal enrichment.
I second the motion.
Mr. Treasurer, will you please call roll for the vote?
Ms. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. Blanton.
No.
Ms. Bowing.
Yes.
Mr. Brecht.
No.
Mr. Roy.
Yes.
Issue passes three to two.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Our next agenda item is build a wall to replace the fence on the outside walkway between the 2 buildings at Hamilton High School.
Hamilton High School will build a wall to replace the fence along the outside walkway to become a safer option. The current fence in the outside walkway is unsafe and can be seen as extremely dangerous. It allows people from the outside of the school to access the kids walking in that area. Items can be passed back and forth between the students and another person. This could lead to dangerous situations and put many students in harm's way. With a new barrier blocking off the outdoor walkway, more students will feel safe and we will be putting less students in danger.
Do you have an estimate on how much it would cost Hamilton High School to build the wall?
Mr. Treasurer, do you have an answer?
The average cost of a 6-foot-by-72-foot brick wall is approximately $50,000. By the hour, it would cost $60 to $105. May range in price depending on the company who builds this for us.
Would the new wall serve any other purposes for Hamilton High School?
Yes, with the addition of the new wall, it would be possible to turn that space into an outdoor classroom. This would allow for teachers to reserve the space and take students outside to learn. This could also open opportunities for art. Like many other outside areas at Hamilton High School, we could turn this area into a creative space for art students. This could also serve a purpose for science classes. They would be able to plant things and observe life outside.
How would this benefit the Hamilton High School students?
This would give students a safer environment, making them more comfortable at school. If students are more comfortable, they are more likely to learn better and have less stress. This would also grant students better options to learn and build a creative space.
Thank you, Ms. Roy. Do we have a motion?
I move that Hamilton High School will build a wall to replace the fence along the outside walkway to become a safer option.
I second the motion.
Mr. Treasurer, will you please call roll for the vote?
Ms. Brecht.
Yes.
Ms. Roy.
Yes.
Mr. Blanton.
Yes.
Ms. Bowing.
Yes.
Ms. Oliva.
Yes.
Issue passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Our next agenda item is reinstituting an exchange student program at Baden. Baden High School will reinstitute an international exchange student program. Baden High School currently does not take any international students. We would like Baden to integrate a program to join other private schools in the greater Cincinnati area, such as Mount Notre Dame. For this program to work, Baden High School would have to get SEVA certified, which is through Homeland Security.
How was the previous program funded?
It was previously sponsored by Hamilton Rotary Club for Hamilton High School, but at Baden, it was funded by the school.
How would the program work?
It would be a year-long program, where the foreign exchange students would come and attend Baden High School. For the duration of their stay, they would be sponsored by his family of a current Baden student. They would have the opportunity to participate in all things Baden, from a service event to a sporting event. This would not only allow for the exchange students to benefit from the experience tremendously, but it would also allow Baden students, faculty, staff, and community to benefit from this program.
How would the host families be decided?
All Baden families would be sent an email, and it would be put on the Baden Blast newsletter. It would contain information about the program and information about how to apply to be a host family if interested. We would then look at the application and reinstate the previous method in order to decide where each exchange student would be placed.
How would including this program benefit Baden High School?
With the addition of this program, it would allow the school to become more culturally diverse, and students would have more opportunities to expand their knowledge while also creating once-in-a-lifetime experiences and opportunities for each and every foreign exchange student. In addition, our rambling would become worldwide and allow for future opportunities for staff and students. I move that Baden High School will reinstate an international exchange student program.
I second the motion.
Mr. Treasurer, will you please call roll for the vote?
Roy.
Yes.
Oliva.
Yes.
Blanton.
Yes.
Bowing.
Yes.
Brecht.
Yes.
Issue passes five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Ms. Superintendent, will you please meet with Mr. Keating and Mr. Pendergast to discuss this and explore the options and costs, then report back to us?
Yes, I will.
This concludes our regular business. We now have time for citizens' comments. If anyone would like to address the board regarding these issues, please step to the microphone and state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Jordan Seitz, and I live at 534 Inglewood Court. Member Oliva, can you tell me how you would implement selecting what is added for the murals and which students would be able to partake in making those murals? I'm sure this would be a competitive process. I'm sure administration would have a lot to say about the contents of murals. What would that process look like?
Well, the way I thought about doing this is kind of the way that Hamilton High School does it. They offer a class that allows students to, obviously under teacher supervision, but that they can create a mural, plan it out, then place it on a wall that was chosen and was authorized to be put up.
So would this be more through the discretion of the art teachers or run through administration, or both?
It can be both. It just depends on the degree of what the mural would be.
Steve Braun, 1165 Eaton Avenue. About this gifted program for the K-3 children, Ms. Superintendent, I think that's a great idea, but what kind of programs should we have or do we have in place to take care of those students who are not identified as gifted?
Well, we already have our traditional classes for students that are identified as gifted. They would still be resuming their education at their home schools as per usual. We also have ELL programs for students that are non-English speakers or are learning English, and we also have special education programs as well for students in need of that. And so I think a gifted program is just another program that would service another group of students that have special needs that do need to be met, so...
Why can't we do that with our existing staff members? Why do we need to hire more teachers for that, which is going to add to cost to the district and cause taxes to have to go up?
Well, students, in a traditional classroom setting, there's the whole top 10% and bottom 10% model, and unfortunately, a classroom, especially an elementary-level classroom, cannot accelerate its learning speed to accommodate those of gifted nature. So it's just having a classroom that would run at a greater pace for them and would support their educational needs is important, because that just simply cannot be achieved in a traditional classroom, because you have so many kids who need the traditional slower-moving educational pace. So it's just, in order for it to be a resource room, in order for it to actually qualify as gifted education underneath the, for district report cards and stuff like that, you would need to have a pull-out room or a different sort of educational, of different educational services in order for it to be qualifying as gifted education. There are certain requirements.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Roy, this idea about building a wall at Hamilton High School, are we just constructing walls and kind of walling ourselves off when really we should be trying to be creating more open spaces than? I'm not sure that I get the point of adding walls.
Well, as of right now, the option we have right now is not safe, and realistically, it's the same thing, a fence and a wall. One is just a safer option, and a wall is creating an open space, because it's opening many opportunities to change that into different spaces, like an outdoor classroom or art space.
Thank you.
I live at 81 Heathwood Lane, and I don't know who proposed the library, but I had a question about the funding.
Yes, Mr. Hartford.
So with the field costing, that whole project costing roughly $15 million, how do you plan on getting the extra $2 million to fund this library?
Well, private investors, well, yeah, private investors gave money to Baden through our stadium, and if we can afford a stadium, that's $15 million, we can afford a library.
What if those investors are tired of investing? How are you gonna get them to invest more?
I mean, it's your education, Mr. Hartford.
To answer Mr. Hartford's question, there are certain donors who, like the Fearman Athletic Center is based off the Fearman family, because they asked their name to be put on there, and they asked it specifically to go to that center. So there would be other centers, like there would be other donors who specifically want to donate to academic stuff, so we would just have to find them and get it out there. And this library would start construction after the stadium was built, so that way it wasn't too much on our community.
All right, thank you.
Sky Stevenson, 920 Millville Avenue. So about the brick wall, I understand the safety and all of that. It's just, I know how you were saying how, sorry, I'm a little nervous, how it's supposed to make it feel more open and safe, but personally, it makes me feel more like a But personally, it makes me feel more like a caged bird. So is there like an incentive or something to make us feel more free? Because we already have areas where they could just take us out, but they still don't do that.
Those areas aren't like specifically said to be outdoor classrooms. Like when I say outdoor classroom, I mean like putting tables out there, like places where like whole classes could go sit outside and like teachers could teach a whole lesson a day. And a fence and a brick wall, realist, like they're the same thing. You can't get out of the fence. You can't get out of the brick wall. It's not going to be high enough to where it's like, you can't like see over it. Like it's just a safer option.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you.
Mr. Youngsmith, about the library, will, at what times will it be open? And how will students be able to access it? Because during class time, they won't, won't have the, it won't be available to them because they will be going to class. And they, certainly students will not want to miss out, want to miss out on lunch. Will the library be open after hours? Will the library be busy during that time?
Right, I was planning on having the, obviously, we are following the door schedules, but we can make a certain like schedule for the library, just so it can open early and, you know, stay open later after school, probably like until three-thirty or so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, Simone Bradbury, ninety-four Beckett Drive. About the wall, I, I like the idea, but my question is, how is the high school going to fund for it? Is that an effort through student council, NHS? I'm just curious.
It could be a combined effort. We do also have a lot of sponsors. Our athletic department has so much money, not even funny. Some funds could be transferred over for that.
All right, and you mentioned the outdoor classrooms. I also like that idea, but are, are we just going to leave the brick as brick? Or are we also going to incorporate the idea of a mural on it as well for beautification?
That's what I was talking about as an art space. We could have students paint on it, like turn it to anything. It won't just be a plain brick wall.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yep.
My name is Connor Wood. I live at one-two-three-four New London Lane. And I have a question for Board Member Blanton. If students are allowed to be given phones during the day, wouldn't they be more incentivized to be on them?
Uh, yes, but with the given policy that they have their phones shut off, if it's enforced enough, they will not be able to be on their phones because the phones will indeed be shut off.
How would you work on enforcing that?
Well, currently, teachers see if students have their phones on them in the first place. So I feel that if they're able to do that, they could also manage to find if they have their phones on them.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jerry Snogrove, and I live at seven-sixteen Governor's Hill Drive. And I have a question for President Brecht. Baden and Hamilton, their communities pride themselves on their strong school spirit and community-driven projects. So how would you get these foreign exchange students to really feel part of that with a language barrier?
Um, I think it's just hard work on our part in making sure that we like understand and educate ourselves on like their culture as well and like make them feel welcome. And I think we do a pretty good job if there is any like difficulty with that, like with anyone in our community now. So I think it's just like learning and continuing to like expand our horizons as a community.
In what specific ways do you think we could celebrate their culture as well as our own?
Just like if they have certain holidays that we don't celebrate, like learning about it and like celebrating it, like Diwali, what we did last month, we can do that too and just things like that.
How would you push schools to participate in that?
Like other schools?
Yeah.
I mean, our community's strong, just like other students, like reaching out to other people and just being like, oh, hey, we did this at school and it was super fun and this is what it's about. And just really like through our community and socializing.
Thank you.
My name is Alexis Bell. I live at twenty-seven Daniel Court, and my question is for Superintendent Wagonfield. Along with the gifted programs at an early age, do you think it would be possible where we could implement more AP classes at the high school? As now we only offer five, and three of them are science and two of them are art-based. Would we be able to offer more that are more math or English-based?
Um, right now, we are currently making a transition to more of a CCP-focused model just because of the benefits that it poses for our school district and for students. There's, I do understand your complaint about the AP courses, but really CCP classes are just as useful and in most cases will offer just as much credit in, when it comes to college. And while we, while we hear your concerns, also, okay, yeah, no. Thank you.
Hi, Jude Gorty, twenty-five-hundred Hamilton Richmond Road. I have a question for Mrs. Bowling. The new cafeteria worker, where will this person work in the cafeteria?
So they will be a part-time worker, and they will be just one of the general workers that's generally passing out food, serving food. They will not have a general like specific position that they're doing every single day. Instead, the higher-ups in the cafeteria, they'll kind of direct them where they need to go and where they will need help.
Okay, because I feel like a big problem is one of the line, like a line at the registration, they're very long, and like when I go in there and I get food and I look at the lines, it kind of makes me not want to get food.
Yes.
So do you think it's possible to add another registration area to make the line shorter? And have that worker work there?
I definitely think that could be a possibility. I can meet with the lunch ladies and decide with them if they think that would be a possibility, and I can report by, by the first of the month.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Bowling.
You're welcome.
This special meeting of the Hamilton City School Board for December fifth, twenty-twenty-four is hereby adjourned.